Good morning, good evening, good morning. Listen to me. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, May 7th, 2019 at 6:30 in the McCullough Hearing Room. First item of business, public comment. Okay, that works. Next up is scheduled appointments. Representative Dykema, flag presentation. First, I'd like to welcome Sheila Wilson here, as well as Tom, Sheila, and Tom, your wife's name, sorry. Amy, Amy, welcome. So Carolyn?
Yeah, I said Kara. Sorry.
Have the Wilson family actually come up would be wonderful at Brian's director.
Dan, do you want to go up there as well?
Oh, just a microphone, Carolyn, I'm sorry. So the public, would you mind grabbing a microphone or we can hold one for you?
We can hold one.
How's that? No, I'll do it, that's fine. Thanks. So it is my honor to be here, and I want to also recognize Brian Sterns, new VSO here in Southborough, for his support in pulling together a presentation to honor John Lieutenant Colonel Wilson in a way that is, that is, he is deserving of, honestly, for his incredible service, not only in the military, with his distinguished military career in Vietnam as a combat veteran, but also when he came back. So his service did not end with his military duty, but in fact, he made service a way of life, was obvious. You know better than anyone, because the family is clearly a part of that service when you give back to the community. But also, as I recently learned, he was in elective office as president of his high school class, which I did not realize until fairly recently. So he literally has given back to his community wherever he found himself and however he defined his community at that time, and done so in a way that left an incredible legacy for all those that he touched. And I just want to speak personally from my own experience with him, as I was telling Tom a few days ago, what was most remarkable, many remarkable things about John, but what I found most remarkable about him is that he, everyone around him, he found a way to encourage them and make them want to be their best and do their best. And I can think of no more wonderful gift, honestly, to give to the world and give to others, to help them feel like they are contributing in a way that was meaningful. And I personally always found that he had that effect on me, and I know there are many others he had that same effect on. And when I think of that gift, I can say that that really, to me, is the definition of leadership. He was so committed, so humble, in a way that I think especially sometimes these days we look around and recognize how special and meaningful humility is in the type of service that he gave. And for me personally, and I know for Senator Eldridge as well, he really was a role model of what service is and what service should be in its best form. And so I personally will continue to remember him and look to his model to guide me, as I think what would, what would John do as I approach challenges in public life. And I just want to say to you, on behalf of myself, as well as Congresswoman Catherine Clark, who represents Southborough, who requested that a flag be flown in his honor over the Capitol, which I would like to present to you today, on behalf of the Congresswoman, as well as myself and Senator Eldridge, to hopefully be even a small token of recognition from those who represent this community of what his service meant, of what his memory means to all of us, and just to recognize you and honor and thank you for sharing him with us for so many years. So on behalf of Congresswoman Catherine Clark, Senator Jamie Eldridge, and myself, with the support, obviously, of the Board of Selectmen and the community of Southborough, I would like to present this to you, Mrs. Wilson, with great thanks and gratitude, actually present it to Tom. Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn, and to everybody who all serves the town, as my father did for so many years, and my wife and I and Jimmy, who you couldn't help but hearing, chatting over there. We just returned to the town about a month ago, so it's nice for us to be back. And the support that we've received from so many people who come up to me, you know, whether it's in the spa or around town, just saying how much my father meant to them, you know, makes me feel, feel good about coming back here and, you know, and just trying to live my life in the way that he did in, in public service and doing things for the, for the betterment of the Southborough community. And we really appreciate the efforts of Carolyn and Brian and everybody who made this gesture possible. It does mean a lot to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Dykema and Mrs. Wilson family. Just know, John has left his mark in so many different ways that you'll never know, that future generations will know some of the wonderful things that John has done, that may not be visible to all of us today, but you have a town's appreciation, a nation's appreciation for the level of support that John gave his country, as well as he gave this town. It's a true testament to what a wonderful man he was, and the town is forever in his debt, as well as yours, for sharing him with us. So I thank you. I don't know if any members of the board would like to add? Please do.
You know, just one quick comment. So I was re-elected last year, and also on the ballot, John was running for the Board of Commissioners of Trust Fund. And he sent me a note to congratulate me, but he also made it very clear who the top vote getter was in all of town as well. So, and it was a great legacy. Exactly, exactly. So congratulations on your.
Well said. And on behalf of our veteran community, I'm particularly grateful for John's service to our country, and, you know, he wore that uniform proudly. And every Veterans' Day, every Memorial Day, I love seeing him in that uniform. He always looked sharp. It fit him beautifully. And, you know, this particular Memorial Day coming up is going to be a special one, as we remember him and, and all of our fallen. So again, thank you for, for sharing him with us.
I've spoken with each of you, but I think we all have gotten involved in politics when John became moderator in town. He took the opportunity at town meeting to grab someone, telling them there's a vacant scene, before you knew it, you got a letter, or at that time, you'd get a handwritten note that you were appointed. So we appreciate everything he's done, as far as getting the community involved in politics as well. Right?
Wonderful. Once again, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And again, thank you, Representative Dykema as well. Next up, Brian Ballantyne, Finance Director, discussion of public safety bonding strategy. Mr. Ballantyne, welcome.
Good evening. So I'm going to be hopefully pretty quick here, I know you've got other things in the hopper. As you know, the Public Safety Building is coming along very well, the construction, you can see it, pretty visible. The financing is coming due in the next month or two to permanently finance another piece of it. Mrs. Braccio and Mrs. Faniff took part in a meeting last week, an informal meeting, just to go over some options, as well as members of advisory, to, to what we want to finance and how we want to do it. We initially thought we'd break it up into two pieces for this year and next year. It seems like the rates that we pay on interest for the bonds are lower than we thought, or they're certainly not rising as we thought they would. So it appears that it was very enticing to look at a June issue date for a larger piece than we initially thought. So we did some analysis, and we kind of boiled down the options to just a couple. And normally, we wouldn't do this with any bonding, to have a vote by the Selectmen or anything like that, but this was big enough where we thought that it would be nice to have the Selectmen's support, advisory's support, because we really, especially trying to get through town meeting in March, we had stated a tax increase of about 2.63 percent. Obviously, that's an estimated rate. However, we felt that any kind of fluctuation from that should at least have some support from the committee. As you know, at the committees and boards, as you know, when we settle the tax rate each year annually in the fall, the rate in the tax increase or decrease, or whatever it is, is set at that point. So you never really know the exact tax increase at town meeting, because local aid, revenues, other things. Debt is an exception to your budget. You can actually, you can actually raise money during the tax rate setting process, because the state recognizes that large projects have fluctuations and funding needs and things like that. So bottom line is, we came up with a plan of 25 years versus 30 years, and it was about 174,000 gross above budget for fiscal '20. We thought that was pretty good. It'll save $1.7 million over the course of those 25 years. That's a lot of money, back to the taxpayer in the end. And we have a couple of things that could fluctuate at the tax rate setting that may eliminate that altogether. Our local revenues are pretty strong for the year, so we may adjust those after June 30th, which changes the tax rate. The interest rate that we get on the bonds may be lower, and we get something what's called a premium from the bonds, is when you sell them, they, it's actually money that comes back to town, and then the bond's resold and at a lower amount. And those have been pretty large, we've seen in the issuances. Lately, it's not unheard of, 500,000 to $1 million to come back to the town, and we really didn't take that into account, because, you know, just because we don't know if that's going to happen, I can't guarantee it. But, so there's, there's several factors that seem to indicate that 174,000 will probably be covered next year if we do it this way, and the reward is 1.7 million in savings. It seems to me a very good option to, to follow up on. So I'm just here tonight to hope the board thinks the same way I'm thinking, and sees it as kind of a no-brainer, and, you know, and a great opportunity to save a lot of money on, on, you know, the long-term bonds. So this, what we're talking about is issuing all at once, again, in June, you'd be actually selling the bonds in the next few weeks, and you'll be having a signing party in the next few weeks, or some of you will. And the, it would be about 15 million or so that you'll be signing off on. It also saves on issuance costs, because if we did it next June again, for another 7 million and split it, the issuance costs are sometimes between 60, 80,000 dollars. So it's more money the town would save in the end by, by doing it one time. So that's it. I, I'm just looking for support from the board to go forward.
Great. Thank you, Brian. And as Mr. Ballantyne said, you know, we did have the opportunity, Mrs. Faniff and I, to sit in, so most of my questions were answered, Brian. I just wanted to thank our finance team for somewhat thinking outside the box and looking at the end, where we could best save the taxpayers' money, and looking at, I know at the 25 and the 30 year as well. So with that said, I think this is a great strategy. It's fiscally responsible for the town, and I will open it up. Mrs. Faniff?
I would like to hear from Ms. Cook, as Chair of the Advisory, as far as just her review of what was said this evening?
Yes, I was going to go there after we opened it up.
Okay. I think it would be helpful for this board to hear, to cheers.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. So we think this is pretty exciting. Advisory hasn't officially taken a position, but we're going to as soon as we can huddle them. Our fifth member just got here. You know, we've only got six people, so we have to have five to have a quorum, so she's here, so we can talk about it. But when we met this week, the bond counsel, or consultants they use, was with us, her name was Mary, and she had put together several options as far as doing this. What the two members of advisory were concerned about, and I think Bonnie was too, was that we told the town, we think the tax increase is 2.62, so we really want to try to keep to that. And as, so I'm just basically going to parrot what Brian said, we think we can do that. There's been some new good news from the state in the last few days, as far as local revenue. The, so we think there's ways to, to get back that $170,000, but to save $1,707,000 with all the capital projects that we've got pending, I mean, that's a lot of money. So just by merely reducing the amortization period of the principal from 30 to 25, we're going to save $1,707,000, which is a lot of money. Past big projects, we've used 20 years, I don't think we can go 20 years, so we think 25 is the right number. The interest rate curve right now is flat, so short-term rates are pretty much equal to long-term rates, so it's like this, it's almost inverted. We did think interest rates were going to go up, they're not right now, for various reasons. So we think that financing right now, which is at about 3 percent, is a really, really good long-term rate, so we really, even if they were to go down, this is still not going to be a bad decision. I don't think we'll ever look back and go, oh, I can't believe we did this. I think we're going to be pretty happy with what we did. And again, $1,707,000 will buy a whole lot of stuff that we need to buy the next few years. So advisory, again, hasn't taken a formal position, and this is not something we really voted on, but I want to make sure that we at least have a chance to, to huddle over here, the five of us, as you guys continue to talk. Okay, but is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Faniff?
I support the recommendation of the Finance Director. I think my questions have already been answered, and my, the homework was done, and I'm satisfied.
Same here.
Yep, same. And again, I, you know, appreciate and recognize, you know, what voters were told on a percent increase. I also know the overwhelming support for this project in general, and I think that town meeting's a very understanding group, and when you can explain to them, you've got $1,707,000 in savings by this, you know, potentially short-term increase of what we said, but we also see an option where it may not even materialize. I, I think we're, we're making the right decision with this.
Okay. Well, a vote isn't required, but I think it's probably helpful where it's such a large bonding, just for a vote of support with the direction that the finance team has gone. Just to have that on record, I think it's a strong position for the board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Cook and Ms. Malinowski, for the meeting that we had. Much appreciated. All right, next up, Youth and Family Services Director, Sarah Castle, regarding mental health awareness, and just a little bit of an update of what's been going on since we last saw you. So welcome.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to introduce who's with you as well?
Yes, I was just about to do that. This is Shannon Kineiman, who's our program coordinator.
Welcome, Shannon.
I've asked her to come along with me this evening, because she, it's like the Superbowl of services at our office right now. She coordinates a lot of our Mental Health Awareness Month programming, and she's incredibly busy, and has a lot to do with a lot of the great programming we have going on right now. So again, my name is Sarah Castle, I'm the Director of Youth and Family Services. Our department is a human service department in Southborough that provides mental health support. We do referral services, prevention programs, need-based services for residents of the town. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening. Just a little backstory about Mental Health Awareness Month. Since 1949, May has been nationally recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. During the month of May, organizations across the country provide support, fight stigma, educate the public, and raise awareness around the impact of mental health conditions on individuals, families, and nationwide. One in five adults experiences a mental health condition in their lifetime, and 20 percent of youth, age 13 to 18, are living currently with a mental health condition. And despite the prevalence, and we see this here locally also, despite that prevalence, many will go untreated, or will struggle in silence, out of fear, fear of judgment, fear of rejection, fear of discrimination. Research has shown that early intervention is critical in treating mental health conditions, yet the average delay of onset, between onset of symptoms and the intervention, first intervention is usually eight to 10 years, unfortunately. So over the course of the last five years, our department has been working hard to develop some Mental Health Awareness Month initiatives and programming. This year, we have been really trying hard to bring programming to all age groups, so we've been doing some, we've been working with the, a theater company to bring services to our youngest residents at Mary Finn School, Woodward, and Neary, to integrate theater arts with talking about feelings and mental health. We are also doing some programming at the middle school. We've hired a, an art therapist to do mindful art workshops. We have a speaker coming to talk about adolescent brain development and emotional regulation in teens. And then we have our culminating event at the end of the month called Celebrate Wellness, where we're featuring a community art gallery, the presentation of the Laurie Sugarman Whittier Wellness Award, as well as some live music and refreshments, as a way to celebrate the observance of Mental Health Awareness Month as a community. So we're here this evening just to ask for your support of, of these initiatives, and we really appreciate the time in giving us the opportunity to highlight the importance of mental health services and fostering a community where those who are struggling with mental health conditions can feel supported and encouraged to get the support that they need.
Wonderful, thank you, Sarah. You just mentioned a few upcoming events. Now, are those open to the public?
They are.
Would you mind sharing the dates, the time, if you have them, and where they're at?
Yes, I wish I had been, I wish I had included that in tonight's packet. The Event for Parents, Carrie Tool of Castle Brook Counseling Services, who's actually a Southborough resident, she's going to be doing a speaking engagement at the library on May 15th at 7:00 PM, I believe it is. And that's on adolescent brain development and emotional regulation, and some great strategies for parents on how to best support their teens, and how to reframe the way they look at how teens are responding, and better their relationships. Celebrate Wellness, which is happening at the Community House at the end of the month of May, on Thursday, May 30th, again at 7:00 PM until 8:30. And that's also open to the public. And currently, we're, we're starting to collect art for the community art gallery, but we're also want people to know in the, in the community that if they are an artist and they would like to see their art in the community art gallery, that they can be in touch with us. And they have to be in touch with us first, as we don't have room at the Community House for hundreds of piece of art, pieces of art, but we welcome them to be in touch with us if they'd like to enter any of their, their work into the, the gallery.
That's wonderful. It's a wonderful opportunity. I know there's a lot of great artists in town with art on the trails and whatnot, and so before we get to the proclamation, is there any questions or comments from the board? Okay.
No, I just, this is, again, I continue to be impressed with everything that you and Youth and Family Services bring to our town and to our residents, and it's great, the awareness campaign, that you're, you know, the more that people find out about you, the more that, you know, the fewer that we hope there'll be those who go untreated, like you were talking about earlier. So thank you both for what you're doing for our community.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. Sarah, has this, has the opportunity to be before the Board of Selectmen brought in new clients? I'm just curious.
That's hard to say. We haven't had anybody come in and say explicitly that I saw you on, you know, I saw you at a Selectmen meeting.
The events, maybe not the office, do you know if the numbers are increasing because of the awareness that's happening here? I mean, I want to encourage you to do that, if it's helping.
I, yes, I would say so. I would say the more often that we're able to connect with the community at large, I think for a long time, there was a perception that our services were for maybe residents who are struggling financially, and it's not the case anymore, especially with long wait lists. It doesn't matter your socioeconomic status, we've got people across the board who are in need of help. And, and the more opportunities we have, you know, these larger one-off events have been really helpful, and giving us an opportunity to connect with people that we might not otherwise see.
And the follow-up to that is, because I know there was a donation made shortly after you appeared here, and I, I think it's great. I just want to foster that, if that's helpful, to continue to come before the board.
Sure, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, and I would encourage you to do that. Hopefully, we can have this, you know, as a fairly regular agenda item with updates to, to this board. It's on TV, so people can hear about the great work that you're doing. I continue to think that you're, you're underfunded, overworked, and, you know, I will, you know, and when it comes budget time, you know, I hope you're here in front of us with, you know, some great detail as to what you need, and so that, you know, you can hopefully garner support early for that. And, you know, I continue to be an advocate for ensuring that you're fully funded, and I don't think you're there yet.
You can count on us to be here.
All right, wonderful. So do we have a vote to accept the proclamation for Southborough Mental Health Awareness Month, May 1st through May 31st?
Hardly moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you for coming, Sarah. It was very nice meeting you as well, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Sarah.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. We're going to skip around just a little bit. We're waiting for Mr. Malinowski to come. I know Ms. Gallagher's here, but my goal was to put Mr. Malinowski first, because I think the other discussion's going to be a little bit longer. So why don't we skip to the consent agenda? Are there any items a board member would like to hold?
Not for me.
Okay. And Mrs. Faniff, I know that there was question on B at one point, and Chief Achilles has looked it over and is in agreement with it as well. So, that being, sorry.
Just, are you going to read these? If you may. I just want to point out, obviously, you know, I, we're accepting the resignation as BOs representative from Mrs. Faniff for Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, Master Plan Committee, and Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee. You know, this is Mrs. Faniff's last scheduled meeting with us, and you've provided amazing service to this town. I mean, you, people see you at these meetings, but they don't always see all the work that you do at all the, all of these other committees that you've been on, not just over the past, you know, years on this particular board, but, you know, how many years have you served this town?
Probably 70.
How many decades, it seems like, right?
Seventy.
Seventy. So, you know, and to Mr. Schiffern as well. I mean, so, you know, I know that your, your time is up on these, and it's, and it's, we don't want to accept the resignation, but we know we have to. But thank you for what you've done for our town.
Yeah. I have to follow up on that. Thank you for thanking me. However, no committee works alone without a lot of, no one person can make any difference on any committee. It takes a committee. And I've been lucky to work on a lot of committees with a lot of dedicated people, and we've had our differences, but the end results has always been in the interest of the town. So, thank you for the nice statements, but again, it's, it's the committee's work.
All right.
Team player.
Absolutely. So, do we have a motion for approval of meeting minutes, April 23rd, 2019, signed MOU between SEMA and Pilgrim Church, a one-day alcohol license request from Chestnut Hill Farm, May 11th, 2019, trail run, 9:00 AM, 2:00 PM, May 12th, 2019, Mother's Day brunch, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, May 17th, 2019, Brew Moon hike, 6:30 to 8:30 PM, approved request to continue opt-out benefit, approved bond reduction request for 84 Main Street, accept $52,036 pilot donation from the New England Center for Children, accept resignation from Sarah Rosatano as part-time dispatcher in the PD, appoint Jeff Norton as part-time dispatcher in the PD, appoint Bee Ginga as the state appointee on the Southborough Housing Authority, appoint Fire Chief Stephen E. Achilles to Southbury, Southborough Emergency Planning Committee as one, fire rescue hazmat representative, and two, emergency management director, three, dissolve the, no, three, just dissolve the Fire Chief Screening Committee, and as Mr. Kalenda said, accept the resignations as BOs representative from Bonnie J. Faniff for Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, Master Plan Committee, and Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Mr. Malinowski is here. So, Mr. Malinowski, welcome for a Public Safety Building Committee project update. Welcome.
Thank you. It's been about two months, but it's probably been light years of progress on the project. Any of you that drive by probably don't see much progress anymore because it's all going on inside. I was in the building yesterday. They are as far as long as painting walls at this point in certain areas of the building. The, we're at a point where the owner's project manager and the general contractor are actually moving their offices inside the building, and they're removing the trailers. We're talking paving of certain areas. So, it's really coming along nicely. I'll get into some nitty-gritty details in the schedule that I think are important for you and the public to know about in a couple of minutes. But I think it's really important to highlight kind of what we've been doing over the last two months. There's been so much activity that we've actually been forced to go to an every-other-week schedule. We were trying to meet monthly. It just was not doing the project justice to make sure the right level of oversight was there. We found that to be working to maintain change order control and fiscal responsibility because, as you can imagine, as more people go and walk through this building, there are a lot more great ideas that come forward. And we're trying to obviously manage kind of our final couple of months here to make sure we do everything we can to bring this project in as far under budget as we can. We still very much maintain that we will be millions under budget and continue to feel very, very strongly about that, especially where we're at in the project. Despite many unforeseen obstacles we've faced along the way, you know, we feel like there's a good level of communication between us, general contractor, the architect, and our owner's project manager to make sure that we are approaching things, you know, on time and bringing things to resolution as quickly as possible. During the last two months, we did, if any of you have paid, paid attention to kind of some of our lengthier meetings, we did receive both myself and your chairperson a series of questions, comments, concerns from the fire department personnel about various items. I would characterize most of it as just misinformation of not paying attention to certain aspects of the project. So, what we felt was in the best interest of making sure everyone's interests were heard is, I kind of led a meeting, it was actually on the evening of Patriots' Day. We invited every member of the fire department, both union and non-union personnel, to just come and ask questions. Chair was there and was in the back corner very quietly, just kind of watched everything. We started with about a list of 16 items that evening and whittled it down to about two questions that they wanted to bring back to the committee for further discussion and kind of open public meeting. Since then, we've taken one of those items off the list, so I'm just going to focus on kind of the remaining item that may percolate down the road, but it may not. And that relates to the vehicle exhaust system that's in the apparatus bay. The system that was in the bid specs, which was the selection of former Chief Morrow, is what we call a air circulation, air recirculation. So, basically what it does is it takes the air, whatever's in the air, filters it, kind of sucks it up from the ground, and sends it out of the building. As opposed to what's currently in the system, is what in the current station is what we call a direct source system, which basically you take a pipe and you hook it up into the tailpipe of, you know, an engine, and it kind of comes off as you pull out of the building. There are other systems out there, but basically, the overall concern is, if any of you have been paying attention, kind of, the press has really picked up recently about the epidemic, is what it's being called, of cancer in the fire service. One of the ways firefighters get cancer is obviously exposure to all the various toxins that they encounter on scenes of both emergency medical calls, but also fire calls, but also kind of the exhaust from the apparatus. Unfortunately, there's no perfect system out there, and that's widely publicized in any sort of press that you read or Google search on, on this sort of topic, which, you know, kind of creates, I'll call it, an opportunity to question what system you put in the building or you don't put in the building. Or do you put two systems in the building out of an abundance of care? We had a pretty, what I'll call contentious back and forth between our committee and certain representatives of the fire department two meetings ago, where kind of some of the feedback we had given them in what I'll call the closed-door meeting, maybe wasn't heard as well as it could have been, and it kind of came out in our meeting. We were able to kind of get to an agreement in that meeting in open forum that, we had a new chief starting about a week later, and we really wanted him to assess the situation. I had briefed Chief Achilles kind of on his way in of kind of what discussions we had had, so that he was starting to think about formulating an opinion. And he reported out at our meeting last night that he has no intention of changing the system that had originally been selected for the building, and did reserve his right to continue to study it with, with the men and women of the department, and come back to us, you know, before we close out any sort of bonding or funding for the project, if he thinks an additional remedy is needed. That will allow them, most importantly, to get into the building and actually figure out how they're going to configure their space. There's more space now than they need. So, the system that was being advocated originally by the fire department, you have to set it up exactly kind of where the exhaust pipe on a certain apparatus is going to land. It doesn't filter certain types of apparatus as well. So, like, just think about a gasoline-type apparatus versus diesel. There's limitations to the system. So, basically, we would have, if we were to add it now, not only would we be extending the project exponentially, adding six, six figures to the cost, we would probably be setting up a system that we'd then pay to change, six months later, pay to change it again 12 months later. So, I thought it was important, especially for those of you that will be on the board post next week, that this may be something that we continue to track as a committee into our kind of final days before you decommission us. But I think there's a really good dialogue, and based on, I spent, I think there's at least 10 to 12 firefighters that were on the tour with us yesterday, and I was in their group. The feedback that was received from them is they kind of now get it, seeing what's going on. So, while I don't think any one of them is willing to stand up and speak on behalf of the entire department, I think, I think we've reached a situation where, you know, we're all in agreement on the path forward, both chief, department, and committee, which is nice to see, because obviously, we don't want all the hard work that everyone's put into the building to kind of go by, go by the wayside for an issue like that on the back end. I think, you know, one of Chief Morrow's last tasks, I believe it was two days before he left, I asked him to write a memo to the committee, basically articulating why he selected the system, which, if you go back to our meetings, was actually articulated back in meeting minutes in December of 2017, which would have been four and a half months prior to the bid documents going out. So, as chair throughout that entire period, I feel very comfortable that there was a very public process when we kind of took a change. I get, no one likes change in any industry, but the fire service in particular, and I can say that being in the fire service. But, you know, I think everyone's doing the right research now, and I think there's just more information that will continue to be gathered, and this luckily is something that can be added after the fact. It is added to very historic buildings across the country and nation very often. So, that was one item that we spent a lot of time in discussion on. The other item that culminated actually yesterday is I received about an eight-page letter from the general contractor asking for all sorts of delay requests, that some were 14 days, some were seven days, some were 14 days. Like, in, it was very hard to tell what stacked on top of each other versus what could be kind of done in a parallel context. We then received a supplemental letter when we showed up at the table to kind of have a meeting. So, yesterday, myself, Mr. Purple from the town, and we had members of kind of the design team, the general contractor, and the owner's project manager, we basically said, "We need to make some decisions." And I felt like the hour and a half that we spent together, there was probably more accomplished in that hour and a half than had probably been accomplished from a administrative perspective in probably a couple of months. So, I was very pleased to hear that they actually thought so much was accomplished yesterday that they canceled today's normal, regular meetings that they usually have at the job site. But what came out of that is we boiled the list of seven-plus pages of items down to about four. I'm going to really focus on one because that kind of drives the rest. So, back in November, the general contractor had asked our design team to clarify the type of sprinkler classification that was required for the fire apparatus bay. There's different types of classification that are required, depending upon what type of hazardous materials are being stored in that. The reason the general contractor was asking is they had just completed a public safety facility down on the Cape that had a different fire classification rating, so basically different sprinkler system setup in the apparatus bay than what our bid design documents specified. At the time, the design team didn't really think anything of it, and replied with an engineering analysis clarifying why they designed it that way, and the general contractor closed it. What then happens from there is they drop all these really nice blueprints of how the system's supposed to go in. Those blueprints have to come to the local jurisdiction for sign-off. When they arrived in the local jurisdiction, i.e. this town, it hit a little bit of snafu, and additional questions were raised that basically referenced that same facility on the Cape, as well as a whole bunch of other items that called into question, were we installing the right sprinkler system in the apparatus bay? So, at the time, Chief Morrow worked with the department to figure out the correct path forward. At one point, and we have a whole timeline of this, I think the important thing is, he basically took the decision out of the local jurisdiction's hand and handed it to the Office of the State Fire Marshal, so that we can make sure that we are getting a completely impartial view of what the right fire classification rating was for the apparatus bay that fire engines are going to operate out of. Luckily, we were able to, I'll call it streamline, the decision. It did take a month, but that's good, good timing, especially given that the individual that was signing off in the State Fire Marshal was on vacation for at least a week and a half to two weeks at that time. We received a letter last Friday stating that the original design was correct, and the classification rating was correct. Unfortunately, during that time, we lost a month and a half of time to be putting a sprinkler into the apparatus bay. If we had started and the state came back with a different finding, we would have been looking at six figures of cost and basically ripping out a lot of really good work. So, we didn't have them do anything until we had that, because that was absolutely the fiscally responsible thing to do. But now, we're in a time period where they basically were ready to start five weeks ago. If you walk into the apparatus bay and look up, everything else is up there other than the sprinkler system right now. So, even the air evacuation, you know, that I just referenced. So, it caused us a delay. We agreed, because we were able to expedite the letter, they were asking for five weeks. We got it down to three. So, what we agreed to yesterday, and the committee unanimously voted on last night, is extending the substantial completion date to August 1st, because they literally are starting the sprinkler system in the apparatus bay now, and then there are finishes that have to go into that area. So, there are other subcontractors that are impacted by that delay. Luckily, it comes, that piece doesn't come at a cost to the town. It just comes at, the departments aren't going to be able to move when we really wanted them to move. But there are a series of four other items that could cause, if they were individual in a silo, could cause that same three-week delay. None of them kind of stack on top of each other. They're all in different areas of the building, and I don't know that you really want me to go into all the level of detail on that. But if it wasn't the sprinkler, it would have been a sink or a drainage pipe. So, we have about three to four issues that are, if we give them three weeks, they're going to get it done. And we took off seven pages of other, one day here, one day there. So, we think it's the right path forward for the town. And like I said, the committee voted unanimously on that last night. So, that's where we're at from a schedule perspective. Luckily, from a cost perspective, we continue to be very rigid in our, our approval process of change orders. We certainly have seen an uptick in wants, like I previously mentioned, and we really are, I got like three more today, and I thought we had them all last night. So, I think it's just a matter of managing the departments. And I think finally, for those that haven't toured the building, there is a tour this Saturday. For those of you that want to join, I've heard from a few of you, probably the last time to get in there before we actually occupy the building, just given the amount of interior work that's going on. So, I guess with that, I'll pause and see if there's questions.
Great. Thank you, Jason, and thank you for the committee's dedication to the taxpayers on, you know, wanting to get this done and getting it done the right way. Just to reiterate, there is no additional cost to the project for the three-week delay. There's no penalties.
There will be incidental costs. Like, for example, we're going to have, like, the owner's project manager has to be to supervise certain things, but their time's going to ratchet down. That's actually one area of the project that's running way under budget. So, we feel like we, we'll have some pluses, we'll have some minuses that should net themselves out to about a net zero for that. But I'm not really sure we have a choice.
Okay. No, that's fine. And thank you as well for coordinating the meeting that you did at the fire station. As you said, I kind of sat in the back corner and let Jason, you know, run the meeting. You did an excellent job. It was a wonderful effort of collaboration, and I think you put a lot of issues to bed that day to make going forward a lot easier. So, I thank you for that, and I thank you for all that you still continue to do. So, thank you for the update. And I did also have the opportunity, I did walk on Monday night the building, and I was stunned, I can tell you, at the difference from when I had done a prior walk and climbed up a ladder, that to actually see the walls up and to see things start to take shape is really incredible. And I had the opportunity to walk with, the fire department was there, Jason walked with them, and I walked with Chief Polis and some of the police. And I can tell you their responses, the excitement that they have at moving into such a wonderful building. that they have at moving into such a wonderful building is, it was very heartwarming to see and the appreciation that they have for the public in being able to get this done. So with that, I'll open it up to the board.
Look, I'll just comment. I mean, it's been evident from every presentation that you've made how diligent of you and the whole committee as a whole have worked on this project and how important it has been to deliver the project on time and on budget. And I think you're, you and everybody to be absolutely commended for that. And as someone who works in the world of public construction, a chapter 149 work on a day-to-day basis, the fact that, you know, we're only talking about a two to three-week potential delay from when this started, don't beat yourselves up over that.
We will, but.
Do not beat yourselves up over it. It's a major accomplishment and the town has been the beneficiary of the tremendous work that your entire committee has put into this and thank you.
Thank you.
Did you know this much about fire apparatus and all sorts of sprinkler systems? And I mean, that was an amazing dissertation you just gave and or do we just, we choose the right person? I think we did, but did you know this stuff going in or you've been learning a lot over the last year?
I knew the ventilation issues. I would say the sprinkler one was a newer one to me, not having ever worked in any sort of fire prevention field. But I think what I've learned in general, just in my fellow committee members would probably, the more you dig in, the more you learn. And the more we've dug in, the more I think we've been able to better manage the project and hold folks accountable. And that goes for the town side too, you know, both former Chief Morrow and even Chief Achilles has hit the ground running, Chief Paulus and Mr. Purple, you know, it's, it's a daily job that we've kind of all taken on over the last 13, 14 months. And I think we're all very happy when we walk through these, the building to kind of see the gratification, not only from the departments, but just being able to see that we built something that you can be proud of.
Well said. Thank you.
Great work. I do have a question though. Since this is my last evening here and I know early on we asked that all the permitting agencies stay in contact with the building committee and the committee with the permitting agencies, board of health, public safety. Have we satisfied all of the committees? Everything's being signed off and good to go and nothing's being held up?
Yeah, so I would say the building inspector participates in the weekly meetings. Since she's joined, she's been phenomenal, just the interactions I've had. I know Mark speaks with her far more regularly, but simple example is the building sign that you all approved on the morning of town meeting. That went through planning board and ZBA in a month. I don't know there's many other things in this town that and kudos to those committees for holding, you know, and getting them on their agenda and holding special meetings, following the process, but also asking the right questions. You know, simple thing, I'll give you another example of, the short answer to your question is yes, but yesterday it came up that the general contractor would prefer to plant some of the grass in, on August 15th, not on May 15th or May 31st. So we actually have a nice, I'll be a little lawn out front. And we basically said, well, we don't want to hold up occupancy for grass. So right, this morning we went to the building inspector, said, can you just confirm with conservation and planning that this isn't going to hold up occupancy? We can get a temporary occupancy permit and we'll satisfy these conditions in the fall when we all know that the grass grows a lot better in New England. And I think within an hour or two, I had a response that had not only the building commissioner sign off of what she was going to do, but planning and conservation of how they view the issues. So I think the responsiveness has been great.
And the board of health?
Yeah, I mean, they haven't been involved for a while now, just because the septic was in last fall. They were involved a little bit with that, anyone that followed their little grease skimmer issue, but that was more in the plumbing inspector's jurisdiction.
Thank you, Jason.
Bonnie, and I'll add too, that I sat in on a couple of the meetings, I sat in on the skimmer meeting with the building inspector and on the phone call and everybody worked well together, plumbing inspector as well. It was, it was a good effort of collaboration, I think, on everybody's part. And I keep using that word, but.
Twenty-minute call saved the town $16,000.
It was.
And everyone, everyone walked out of there and knew it was the right answer.
Yeah.
I think it's important to also acknowledge that type of effort between a lot of.
Everyone that is touching this project, you know, is doing a phenomenal job. We obviously hold our consultants who are paying some pretty good money to a higher standard, but even they have risen to the occasion when we really needed them like on the fire sprinkler.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything further? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. All right. Ms. Galligan. DPW superintendent, transfer station rules and regulations.
So this is our annual rules and regs rundown. From the memo, you can see the couple of changes. We're looking at trying to add back, people can go to the transfer station, transfer station, DPW office and get stickers or permits as well as doing at the clerk's office. The board, Public Works Planning Board, would still like to go into eventually getting these stickers into your tax base. But this year, it's not put in that way. It's put in as the $250. That's the way the budget was put together. We were looking at taking away the recycle-only permit because that is currently, it costs us more to recycle with the problem we're having with China. So it's actually more expensive. So to, there's no, shouldn't be a discount for people to recycle only. And then we also, they, I proposed and the board did vote that having, having the credit card and debit card fee paid for, you know, at that, that convenience fee that you end up paying, that rather than the town covering it, we don't cover it for any other credit card payment or debit card payment, that that actually continued to be, that we stop, we stopped doing that. And that's about, it's somewhere around $8,000 based on what we, what I was looking at from the billing. So that's the crux of what we're looking at. These, these rules and regs have evolved over so many years with all these different changes and stuff as far as what people were, you know, how, how everything's just kind of come about and why they're so cumbersome at this point, but that, that's the crux of what we're looking at trying to do.
Thank you. In, in looking over some of the, the changes, I know we've been talking about the transfer station for a while. As far as, I would like to suggest for discussion, of course, leaving the transfer station as far as whether or not to put it into the tax base, leaving it as it is for this year, but during that timeframe, I'd like to give an initiative back to the Public Works Planning Board. I'd like to see, we all know it's kind of a hot-button topic, the transfer station. I'd kind of like to see some public forums done. I'd like to have a lot of feedback from the public as well as on the recycle only. I believe there's only 100 recycle stickers roughly. And I question how many of those people are actually paying $25 for a sticker to just go to the swap shop? I don't necessarily know that they're increasing the recycling. That's another survey I'd like to see have done. So we have all of the information before us when we do make a decision on putting it in the tax rate or not. And I think we should work very closely with the Public Works Planning Board. I mean, this is their recommendation. They've put a lot of work into this. So that's kind of my recommendation on some of these things. And I have some other comments, but I will open it to the board.
Sounds like a plan.
I mean, I think it's a worthy discussion and, you know, we do have new members coming on the board as well. But again, we keep discussing it and I think if we can agree to put a plan in place going forward, you know, that when this comes up six months from now or even next year, that, you know, we have a plan as to more details that we can actually have a discussion. I don't know that I have enough information to move forward, so.
Of course, this evening, you're asking the town, asking us, or the town, anyway, to table the discussion about putting it in the tax base only.
Yes.
I agree with that. But I, in principle, I do. But I have to ask, the numbers that you ran, Karen, the way I understand it, your department will not be in the rent if we do not implement addressing it within the tax rate. Because it's not an emergency and you couldn't go back to the advisory board asking for money that you anticipate that you need.
I see what you're saying. Yes, so there's no, basically any of these changes isn't, doesn't create any kind of additional cost for the DPW.
Okay.
And I might like to add, I think working with advisory as well on, you know, so we're all on the same page as, as we go forward as well. Yes.
And as far as the adjustment of the numbers, does that affect your budget? The fees?
No, that, because, because that money doesn't come direct to us since it's not an enterprise fund. The reason we're keeping it the same is because it affects the overall budget of the town.
But it's not negative, as far as you know.
Correct. Right, doing it exactly the way we did it last year should, should yield the same money.
So based on what's before us, with the three items that Ms. Galligan has brought before us, the increase, the recycle-only permit being eliminated, I would suggest we hold off for a year to get the data on that item. On the, again, I'm sorry, Brian.
No, go ahead.
Okay. On the permits being purchased online and through the DPW, I know there was a question with Mr. Hagerty that being able to implement something that new residents that may go to the transfer station for a sticker, be kind of directed back to town hall because there's a lot of other new pieces for new residents. There's voter registration that those things are done at that time. So I would ask that if somebody's down there to get a sticker, they could certainly get a temporary sticker for the day and then they could certainly come back to the town hall. I believe it was census, dog licenses, voter registration, potential excise tax. It just gives an opportunity for the clerk with a new resident to be able to take care of some of the issues. So that's a suggestion.
I, I don't see harm in having it in two locations.
No, I, I agree. And I think the, the question was more for the new resident that may come to get a first-time sticker. Is to kind of guide them to the townhouse. And I don't think that's a bad idea because.
That could be written in here.
Agreed. So, and that's obviously up to the board's will. So the board's comments on that. And on the third issue, not paying the 2.95 credit card debit online, we don't do that. If somebody pays online now for excise taxes or any of the other things, they pay, there's a fee attached to that. So I'm not against having the fee attached to this instead of it coming out of the tax base. So on those three points, which Ms. Galligan has brought forward to us, board's thoughts?
I'm not in favor of the recycling permit only.
Being eliminated or?
I think it should be eliminated. What I see happening, and I'm up there three times a week, just out of curiosity, the swap shop now has become a dumping ground for everything. And then our employees, they pick it up and have to dump it into the hopper or recycle it. It's, I think it's, it's unnecessary for the, like, as you suggested, the number of people that might have the sticker. It's creating more work and potential, I think a situation that we just can't monitor as much as it needs monitoring. I mean, I was in favor of it. I actually supported Mr. Barron and his efforts, but I think now it's become a drop-off place for everything.
I would agree and I'm not going to vote against Mrs. Faniff tonight, so.
Ask for the world.
Either way, I'm very supportive of that idea. Cause I was supportive of it last year in practice. Maybe it's not working how we had thought. I like your idea and I'm supportive of it.
I mean, when you start seeing broken mares and discarded suitcases that have no value dropped off there that really belong in the hopper, you have to ask yourself, why are we allowing it?
Okay, I'm fine with that as well, Mrs. Faniff. So, direction-wise, sorry, Mr. Shay, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I support the recommendation that Karen has presented to eliminate the recycle-only permit for this, in these current rules and regulations.
Okay. As far as allowing the, just to be clear, allowing the DPW and the townhouse to both do stickers and adding in here, Karen, that first time. So we're all on the clear that, and I can give you that, I'm sure Jim has said as well, that first-time residents come to the townhouse. Are we fine with that?
Yep.
Okay. And then the, having the person that is using their debit card to pay for the online purchase, also paying the fee, which again is consistent with everything else we do at the townhouse as well.
Yeah, Mr. Valentine charges me a fee every time I pay my water bill online. Don't you, Mr. Valentine, so. So, yep.
Okay. So as far as any changes to the putting it into the tax base, we're kind of all on the same page to re-bring this discussion forward again, but, you know, planning that we're going to reach some conclusion on that. So that being said, I just have a couple of quick questions, Karen, on the actual regulations and then I'll turn it over to the board and then we can be good. The under the prorated permit fee schedule, the new residents only move to Southborough after September 15th. There's a $20 a month purchase through June 30th, paid in full on purchase date. So if the stickers become active, the new stickers are after September 15th, say?
Correct.
So if I'm buying a sticker and I'm only paying through June 30th, I'm just, can you clarify that? It says purchase month through June 30th. Wouldn't it be through September?
So they can only purchase them through June 30th because then you can purchase the new sticker as of July 1 for, for the following year?
So it's, so if somebody comes in on September 16th and purchases a sticker, they're only paying through June or are they actually paying?
They're paying $20 a month through June and then July 1, they, so they're paying as though it's June 30th and then everyone kind of gets those 11 weeks for free in a way, right? Because you, you have 11 weeks to get a sticker. So there's two stickers that are good for 11 weeks every year. So it would still be good till September 15th. It won't expire on them because it's going to be the exact same sticker anyone else would get, but everybody else is, is valid still there during that summer.
Okay.
Does that make any sense? No?
It, it does make sense to a point, I guess. You know, again, it's, it's the numbers thing with me. It's, it's, if my sticker doesn't really start, even though you get the 11 weeks free, I get that.
Yep.
So, but if I'm one of those people that show up at the townhouse, you know, it's September 15th, not even just moved in, just one of the people that waits to the last minute until my old sticker expires, I'm paying $250, but somebody that may be new to town, just moving in, coming on the same day is going to actually pay more than a resident that's paying the 250. If you do the math, because it would be four months and then six months. So that's 10 months at $20 is $200.
250 is 250.
Right, so they're paying 200, but everyone else is paying 250.
Does that make sense?
Yes, well, to me, I guess, because.
Again, it's, it's the numbers game. It's, if.
Well, and it was, that was, the prorated was something that we had done, like, sort, like, we had a step down originally and then it changed recently, the last couple of years, that it would be just $20 a month.
Okay, so that was my question. And the only other thing I really had was, and we kind of talked about this, but if you could just kind of do a quick follow-up, that on a rental, say, because the regulations say senior residents, residents who are owners of a record of a Southborough residence, if somebody rents a property, it doesn't necessarily exclude them
Correct.
from getting a sticker, even though this appears it may, but in past practice, it hasn't. And I just wanted to verify that.
That's correct. So renters actually have the ability to have the sticker. The owner of the property, if they don't live there, they're not supposed to have one because it's a commercial property for them and then it's a commercial trash. Logistics.
All right, I, I get it.
Right?
I get it. Okay, thank you. Any other?
My other question, paragraph nine, inability to pay.
Yes.
On the number two, at the end of that line, does. On the number two, at the end of that line, there's a stray word, recommendations. Is there a line missing, or is that a carryover for the next item three?
I'm not 100% sure what is on there normally, I apologize. I will have to, I will find that and I can, I can let you know, but I don't know what it is on my own. It's on both versions, so.
Okay.
Sorry, sir.
Mr. Kalenda, Ms. Faniff, anything?
Nope.
Just one other quick point that, that I, when we relook at this again, I, I would like the board to consider, not today, but for the third permit, putting a fee on that, I know there's people that I've spoken to that they get a third sticker because it's free, not because they necessarily need it or use it. So, we could potentially down the road consider that as well. So, that being said, Mr. Hagerty, did you have something to add? Okay.
When we submitted our budget, when we were asked to reduce all the budgets, the clerk's office submitted a budget that reduced 8.1% and a substantial reduction was in, went back and cut more from salaries. And one of the ways we did that, and I notified your board in January that, the assumptions we made is that we would start selling the stickers on August 1st instead of July 1st. Now, that may not seem like a little deal, but it's, it, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to sell stickers on July 1st that, when the sticky you already have is good for another 11 weeks. It's a recipe for people to lose the stickers, it happens all the time. I, I don't want to, there are several people in the room currently that that happened to, people don't put them on the stickers. The seniors are confused, we give them a sticker, what do we do for 11 weeks? People get them, they come back, they want replacements because now they've turned in their leased cars. There's just no, there's no, I can think, I can't think of a good reason to sell a sticker 11 weeks before it goes on the car. It, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. So, we put that in our budget, and that's what we've moved forward with, and we have worked with facilities, the senior center, and the kids we've hired for the senior center are all plugged in to start in August. They can't come in July. So, that proposal that you have there has something I think is very problematic. It proposes selling the stickers to DPW, which is fine, if you want to do that, that's fine. But it proposes selling them to DPW in July and not selling with the clerk's office till August, and you can't do that. That's just going to lead to nothing but confusion and aggravation. Residents, people don't read the fine print. When you look at the, the, the volume of the rules and regulations that are mailed up to people, they're just not going to read it. So, people are going to come into the clerk's office on July 2nd, and there are early adopters, people that literally line up, and they're going to be angry, why can't I buy a sticker here? It just, I don't want to be part of something, I, I asked to get involved in this because I wanted to make this easier for the residents. I think there's no advantage to selling stickers on July 1, and there's certainly no advantage that, I can't go back, I can't sell them July 1, we're committed. I think it's going to create a lot of anger and a lot of confusion to try to sell them at different times and different, excuse me, different parts of the towns. I just can't see any reason behind that. So, I'd ask you to consider, just start selling them August 1st, it just, to me, it makes a lot of sense. The second thing is I passed out stickers to you, and Karen has a copy of this. Many of the residents would prefer to put the stickers on the inside of the car, and just some math we did today, we've issued 256 replacement stickers this year, 160 of them for people that replaced license plates, new cars, old plates, whatever, 87 are because the stickers fell off or they were damaged. And you know, when people told me the stickers fell off, I'd be perfectly honest, I didn't believe it, it didn't make sense to me. But my wife got a new car last fall, I put the sticker on myself, clean windshield, life was good. When they're on the outside, they can come off, when people turn the defrost on, it can weaken the adhesive, you know, when you're trying to get the ice off and it falls off. I couldn't believe it, it happened. But 87 of the 256 stickers that we've replaced are because of damages associated with the outside stuff that have fallen off. That's a big number. This sticker you have right, this thing here right, is a really cool thing that's done by several towns, this is done by Yarmouth. And if you remember the process, when you go to get a sticker right now, we enter the stuff from the computer, fill it out, and then by hand, we print on here, we try to make it neat, we put the label over the top, and life is good. This is the actual receipt, this is what would be generated out of the computer. So, there's no, you can, a laser printer will print this thing in the middle at the bottom, this is your receipt, whatever information you want to have. There's no mistake of a typo, it's, it's, if you recall the public comments a couple of years ago, that some of the stickers looked like third graders wrote them, that kind of a deal, you're going to have your rules and stuff on the back of it. And if you just turn this thing over for a second, you just peel this a little bit right here, it goes on the inside of your window. This would save a ton of time, it would look much more professional, and the residents would like this a ton. Is it a deal-breaker if we don't do this? No. But to me, this would be a smart thing to do, and the residents, I think, would be very much in favor of it, so I'd ask you to consider that.
Can I just ask you, Jim, on, on this, would this be up and running and available by?
Yes. Yep, I already talked to a vendor, I would, I needed three-week lead time, and that's it. By the way, if we do decide to go with the outside stickers, we're going to switch vendors. We've dealt twice with a local company, and they were not, it's, two strikes and you're out, we'll do with another company. So, to me, this makes a ton of sense in terms of efficiency, it's a better-looking product, and it, it's more informative, because we don't give people that rules and regulations when you get your sticker. I mean, we'd be cutting down trees forever and a day. Here, you put your key points on this and you're good to go. So, I'd ask you to consider that.
Front or back?
Both, you could do both.
Either one?
You can do both, absolutely. That's exactly what this is.
There's no, there won't be a requirement that the individual has to put it on a certain spot?
I beg your pardon. You could, you could say that exactly what you want, but it would go on the inside of the windshield, only on the inside. You could determine exactly where you want it to be. But you couldn't put it on a bumper, you couldn't put it...
Okay.
Wherever you decided to put it.
Inside your car, could it be on the back?
If you chose to.
Over your car, then, windshield?
Absolutely, if you chose to.
Okay.
Thank you, much.
That's your decision.
Want to hear what Ms. Gallagher says? And it, and also, are there laser printers at both sites?
Yes, there are. As far as we, they would need to be somewhere where we knew where to look for them. You can't be willy-nilly on any window in the car, we kind of have to have an idea of where they are going to be. So, if people, if people want to move them and to have them on the back instead of the front, we move them to the front because most people pull in forward into the recycling center, and that's actually where we walk more than at the, at the actual hopper. So, that's why they're in the front. I'm not sure if the defrost weakens the glue when they're on the outside, I'm not sure it won't weaken the glue on the inside, so I don't know if a windshield is a good spot then, right? If it, if that's, I, I don't, we didn't have a lot of issues with them falling off, but if that is the case, but I would like to talk about the August 1st thing, if you guys... So, I, I, Mr. Hagerty had sent me the email, he had sent you guys about the wanting to change it to August 1st if, if he took those budget cuts that were suggested. And most of it had to do with, or in this email, it was about that he has someone who goes to training for a week. The thing is, is that if, if they are here, like, the anticipation wasn't that we were going to sell them down there only in July, but then everywhere in August. We can, there's, there's definitely ways we can deal with this. I know that the week that, that the training happens down at the clerk's office, I believe the selectman's office could sell them. I also think that we have an issue where it's not a big deal if the seniors get them and they do the, the setup that Mr. Hagerty has done down at the senior center, giving the senior stickers that way. That's a great thing, people seem to like it, there's no reason it can't be in August, that's not a big deal. They slap the sticker on anyway, so if you put the sticker right on right then, it shouldn't matter if it's July or August, but if the people are coming in August, I don't see why that would matter to still sell them, start selling them in July. We always tell them, you can put it on right now, it's good immediately when we sell them. So, I mean, yes, people do lose them, but people, people lose them sometimes on September 15th between the car and when they get home. So, we've had people come back and, you know, they've left them or they put them in their checkbook. So, people are very used to it, and people will still come. To, to Mr. Hagerty's point, people don't necessarily read the rules and regulations. So, if you're suddenly changing something that's happened since 1976, where people get the stickers on July 1 and you move it to August 1, that's, they're not going to see that or read that either. And it just, the convenience of people being able, I've checked, we sell, out of the 45, 4,800 stickers, over, about, between 17 and 1,900 of them are done in July. So, it just, a lot of people come then, and more than half have bought by September 15th because we did have that early. But it, people are still doing it, so it just, it just doesn't make sense to me to not do it and keep it convenient for people. Questions?
If I could come back on a couple of things there. Roughly 700 stickers in July were because of the senior center. And the seniors are creatures of habit. What I learned is that if we tell people the start time is noon time, we better be good to go at 11:20 because people line up early. And we can, with orange notices on the outside of the envelopes, all kinds of stuff to make this work, but it'll, this system is, it's not like hanging out a brochure. To say that these could be sold in, in August at the selectman's office at the front counter, that's just not going to work. I got involved in this to try to make this easy for people, but it's going to be a disaster if you try to do this in different places, and people are going to get angry. And I just don't see any reason, we're down the road to August, we've made that commitment, I can't back out of that now, and I just...
People get that angry over a sticker?
Thing is, you're concerned people are going to get...
Like visibly angry over a sticker?
I've, we've had, yeah, we've had some, some folks, it is, it's an issue for folks.
Sad, okay.
But, but in terms of people...
Ms. Gallagher, now, you've done this for years, so what do you, what do you suggest we do?
I, I really think we should still give them, start selling on July 1. I just think it's, it's a huge change, it's a huge inconvenience for people. A lot of people are still here in July, and then they do go away for the summer, and you're now, if they're away in August, they're trying to pack in, you know, the last two, the first two weeks of September, and it's, it's worked for years. The selectman's office has sold these prior to it coming down to the DPW. And I mean, I, I know people, you're concerned that people are going to get upset, but they're going to get just as upset when they show up on, on July 1 anywhere and can't get a sticker. So, if they're upset about not being able to get one at the clerk's office, but they can get one at the DPW, I think waiting a month isn't going to, that's not going to not make them as upset. If they're upset about one, they're going to be upset about either.
It, it's a different, if the difference is kind of upset, it's, what do you mean, a can of pocock and a Pepsi here? It, it's going to put the clerk's office in a trick bag. It will. And I raised my hand and I pushed to do this, to make this easy for people, and we've had, we've made this a lot easier. But I got to tell you, I, I, I can't emphasize enough how opposed I would be to do this. And I ask you please to move it to August. It's a very, very big deal.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Faniff?
I think what we're going around in this conversation, it keeps coming back to the word convenience. To me, I don't think it matters if it's being sold at the town clerk's office or down at the DPW. It's convenience. You got two locations, you got two people that are qualified to do this, and if we still have the town clerk run the event at the senior center, I said, you know, go for it. I mean, I think this is more of a cooperative effort between two departments and convenience for the town.
It's just a timing issue. You're absolutely right, we can do both.
I mean, July 1st, August 1st, if I want to get it in July or come, or August, I don't think it really matters. I, I can't get my hands around what the issue is with the July 1st or the August 1st, if we have both.
Because we're going to have people lining up at the counter and saying, you can't buy it here, but you get out of there. Why can't I buy it here? And we're going to catch that pointy end of the spear.
So, why can't I buy it in August?
Because we're not going to have the people there for it.
In July?
Yes, that's correct. We're not going to have the staffing for it. We've already made that commitment. We don't have the staffing, and we cannot do the senior center in July. We've set them up for August.
How about a nice big sign out front?
Mr. Kalenda, I'm telling you, this is going to turn into disaster.
And I'm hearing it's also going to be a disaster either way.
Well, I got to tell you, at this point, I'd give serious consideration to saying that perhaps, maybe you should consider, I should take this back and sell it all yourselves. I, I, I did this...
Right, no, no, you offered to do it, I know.
Exactly.
And so, but maybe it's better to, that it just stays with...
Well, if that's, if that's what you want, if that's what you want, great.
Do you like having the partnership? Does that work, does that help you and your team and...
It's, it's very convenient for the residents, so it, you know, it makes sense to have it at both places, and that's why we're trying to bring it back down there.
All right.
So, that, we do have people who come, we're here, we, here, you're here late on Tuesdays, but we're here on a regular day on Sat, on Fridays. So, it, it allows more hours, more convenience.
See you then.
I think it's a convenience, I think the cooperation between the two departments, I think it can work. You have the staff, I know the staff's down there, you've got the hours that's necessary, you have the staff. Back to the sticker. What is the issue with this, what could be the concern with the sticker on the windshield as far as the monitoring at the transfer station? Is there one?
It's, so, we have the two options where it's the windshield or the bumper, just on the front. We had moved that a few years back, it took a little while for people to get used to that, but it's because of the pull-in. Whether it's on the inside, I don't have a great concern either way, as long as it's not in the little, like, my windshield at work has a weird black area that, if it's under there, that's useless for us because we can't see it, but there's, but where it's clear, it's fine. But the Public Works Planning Board was concerned that if we had it on the inside, people could tape it, and then they could move it around. And that, that is a concern that had been given many times before, which is how things, we ended up turning, putting the license plates on it, that was because people thought they were handing them out, and so, a lot of what has developed has been from people's concerns and saying, well, I saw this guy had a sticker and he doesn't even live in town, so that's...
So, the only concern from the Public Works Planning Board was that this could be taped to a window?
Yes.
Excuse me, not the only concern.
Oh, sorry. Yes, that's, Bill is the chair of the Public Works Planning Board.
I didn't know that.
Sorry.
So, need a microphone.
I would like to know what the concern was because I, I don't see an issue with it personally, but if there's a concern, I'd like to know what it is.
Name an address, please.
William Boland, 35, East Main Street, current chairman of the Public Works Planning Board.
Thank you.
We had, we had discussion on the location of the sticker. First of all, we, we completely support Ms. Gallagher's proposed rules and recommendations. We suppose, we supported the sticker on the outside because it's worked there fine for dozen, dozens of years. And putting it on the inside creates a problem of a tinted windshield maybe not being able to see it as well. Being able to temporarily affix it to the inside of your windshield where it's easier to swap it between cars and do other things, that goes back to why we put license plates on them years ago. And as well, I don't know if you've ever seen when your car gets a new inspection sticker, how they scrape the sticker off the inside of the windshield. They take a razor blade and they pretty much hack your windshield up. Personally-wise, I've never had a problem getting the sticker off the outside of my bumper, where my wife likes to put it, or the outside of the windshield where I like to put it. I don't have a problem with them falling off. The old stickers worked completely fine, I'm not sure why we changed stickers, because they worked. Someone supposedly said they couldn't read license plates on the stickers, we didn't find that. If you want to go to when the stickers should be sold, I'm not sure if people understand the simple process behind this, but the fiscal year starts July 1. That's why we still sell stickers July 1, that's the beginning of the fiscal year. We pay our taxes on a certain date, the fiscal year begins a certain date. Originally, stickers went from July 1 till the end of June, but we made accommodations to people who couldn't possibly get their stickers while they were away for the summer at their summer homes. So, hence why they were extended till after Labor Day for September 15th. I, I, I don't see the issues. It's worked well for years. We've changed stickers three or four times. Every time we change them, I've had a problem with them. Between numbers wearing out, things peeling off, a sticker that basically said, I climbed Mount Washington with the size of it. You know, DPW and the selectmen control the transfer station and the operation of the DPW. It was nice of Mr. Hagerty and the town clerk's office to volunteer to take it on. Seemed to make sense. But we seem to keep making changes because it's more convenient for the clerk's office to do it another way. So move it back down to the DPW if the clerk's office doesn't want to do it the way it needs to be done. He should be given a lot of credit. The seniors love the program that was put in. We as the Public Works Planning Board thinks, think that's a great idea. But we're monkeying around with something that's pretty simple and has worked well for years. And, and I, I don't see why we're doing that. You know, we're, we're fully supportive of Ms. Galligan in, in how she's doing this and how she operates the transfer station.
Thank you. Mr. Hagerty, these stickers, do they work inside and outside?
Strictly inside.
Strictly inside.
You peel it off the back and the adhesive is on the front of it. So you, so you can't actually, you can't move it once it's on. Take one, I'll show you one.
Okay.
And you two would like it, the old sticker on the front bumper or front of the windshield? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that was the position of the Public Works Planning Board. Ultimately, we feel it's Ms. Galligan's and the selectmen's decision.
Your recommendation, Ms. Galligan?
I was fairly neutral on it. Whatever the residents want. I, I prefer them on the outside, but if people really want it on the inside, I haven't had, that's why-
But if we go with this option, there's only one option, which is inside.
Correct.
And if, if I may, there, there are people that don't want it on their windshield, they want it on their bumper. There are people that don't want it on their bumper, they want it on their windshield. So, so it's been a good compromise.
What do you think, Mrs. Faniff?
Personally, I don't care if it's on the inside or on the bumper.
But we, it sounds like we have to pick something.
I'm going to have to go with what we've done in the past.
And I will agree with Mrs. Faniff.
I don't want to agree for agreeing. I want to agree on-
I was going there. That's why I was asking these two their questions. I understand where Mr. Hagerty's coming from, but Public Works, you know, you guys gave your recommendation. You think it works?
Various boards have asked-
How it's currently working? You were the ones who have done this for years and years. I'm going to, if I'm going to go with someone tonight, I'm sorry, Mr. Hagerty, I'm going to go with Mrs. Faniff and these two tonight.
Various forms of the Public Works, Works Planning Board have studied this forever.
Right.
And so with, can I ask a question? With second and third permits free, do you think there's still going to be an issue of people taping it and, and sharing it? I can see that happening within a household, but I would be far less likely to believe that, like, if my neighbor came up with this concept, I'd say, I'm not going to waste my time doing that, I'm just going to put my own sticker on my car.
That's why we put the license plates on originally, because it was happening all the time with neighbors splitting the cost of two hundred dollars and, and instead of putting it on their own two vehicles-
So wouldn't-
They'd sell one to the neighbor. So I don't think that's going to be as much of a problem. Quite honestly, I've, a lot of the feedback I've heard is that people would prefer to have them on the inside. So I'm actually leaning towards having, at least for this part of it, leaning toward, towards stickers on, on the inside, but.
I've heard some of the same feedback as well. In the interest of, but at the end of the day, as long as the stickers are fixed on the car, I, I'm, in having this issue be completed tonight. Mrs. Faniff, your recommendation was, I don't think you have.
I didn't care one way or the other.
I don't care one way or the other either.
On the outside, as we typically have done, with the July and August dates available to the community, both locations, a cooperative effort between the parties to continue what's being done at the senior center.
Yeah, I, I want to second the cooperative effort because I think a lot of people do enjoy going to the clerk's office and being able to get their stickers there, whether at the townhouse, doing other town business. So I, I think it's important that we, we find a way, Mr. Hagerty, to be able to still work together to benefit the taxpayer. I know how strongly you feel about this, but at the end of the day, hopefully we can all work together and find a solution, I guess.
I don't know if that's going to be possible. I am very concerned and, Mr. Kalenda, I, I can't over, I've dealt with thousands of people with stickers myself personally the past four years.
I know you've delivered some.
I, I deliver them.
Personally delivered, which I find incredible too.
Well, we're all neighbors and I try to do that. But I just, this, I get a head scratcher, why you folks have your backs up about accommodating a month change when there's no advantage to having that month? And the consequence of that is going to be so many people ticked off.
So I, I'm confident that the public, that will be educated about what we've decided here tonight and that a big old sign will be put somewhere to continue to educate the public. And if you find that you get people that are that viscerally angry over a sticker, then yes, send them our way.
If you think people get upset about the swap shop, come on down, we'll talk stickers.
I hear you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I second Mrs. Faniff's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Other matters before the board. Discussion of EDC Downtown Initiative and Bylaw Updates. Mr. Kalenda?
So I, I think this can be very brief. I see that there's, we just had an influx of a beautiful family come in and-
We did.
And let's get to that. So I think it was last week, the Economic Development Committee was in front of the planning board and had a very good, robust discussion about bylaw changes and from whom they would come. And it was, it was agreed that, if I have this correct, I think I do, it was agreed that the EDC could offer a bylaw change regarding the downtown initiative, whether or not there can be mixed use for some properties down there and have the zoning bylaws updated to reflect that. And that the planning board would receive whatever the EDC or any board or committee were to offer them, they would receive it and give it its due attention. So I thought it was, you know, it was a good discussion about the downtown initiative, which affects our entire community. I think the downtown, as we've seen, is, is, you know, we're, we're, Main Street Project is, is just getting underway. It's going to beautify the, the roadway, it's going to, we're going to have some sidewalks and some, you know, it's going to really, I think, enhance the, the, the beauty of downtown. We have the ability then to hopefully, you know, make available some different kinds of businesses there as well. So to hopefully not only help our current businesses there, but maybe attract some similar, you know, types of businesses there and some traffic, some much needed traffic to the town of Southborough. So I just, you know, I had asked that this be put on our agenda so we can have a very brief discussion about that. What I'd love to do is see if, you know, if it is, you know, I'm, I'm inquisitive, is this board supportive of the downtown initiative? And I think part of that would be working with EDC and any other board or committee to, to update our zoning bylaws and, and whether or not we can work proactively. I mean, I'm happy to, to be a liaison or, or we can wait till the next board is constituted to see, hey, how can we work together with, with EDC? Can this board do that and then off, be able to offer something to, to planning? They can consider it. And then together, because this affects all of us as a town, what's the best way to move forward to present something, you know, to the residents to approve?
Thank you. May I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
So as far as the downtown initiative, I, I also had watched the planning board meeting. I would like to make the suggestion that we have new members coming on the board, that at our next meeting, EDC come in and actually discuss what the downtown initiative is and how it correlates with the ULI, to give them an opportunity. And then the new board can decide if, you know, who or may or, you know, will work forward. But I think, you know, I don't know enough about the downtown initiative based on what I've seen. I mean, I kind of have a general idea of, of where they want to go, but I think it's an opportunity as well for EDC to come in and showcase what they're looking to do. So that would be a suggestion I have. And obviously, it's, it's up to the board and it's-
Yeah, I think it's a, a great idea to continue to move this forward collaboratively. We saw that with EDC and planning to receive whatever might be produced. And I think, you know, if we can put it on an upcoming agenda-
Next agenda?
I think that would be great.
Because we have our new members coming on at that time and it would be a good way to get them up to speed as to some of the things that are going on as well.
And we have the chair of the EDC here as well. I'm not sure if she has some comments to add?
Sure. Just real quick, I don't want to- Hi, Julie Connolly, Chair of the EDC, twenty-six Oak Hill Road, if that matters. Just, I, I, I think that's a great idea, Lisa, and thank you, Dan, for bringing this to our attention, and I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Dan, for, for putting it on the agenda tonight and for keeping this topic up to date. And Lisa, I totally agree. Moving forward, we, you, you know, you really hit the, hit the nail on the head, Dan, about working collaboratively. That's absolutely the best way to go. We've been working with the planning board for some time now. What we've discovered in our year-plus work of trying to make some movement on the downtown is that the two major obstacles we're going to face are zoning and, and sewage treatment. So zoning is one of them. We're working separately on sewage, so that's why we've been working with the planning board. We think that we have very broad-based support among the residents in town. Our survey that we put out last year strongly supports that. People want to see some more business, some more vitality downtown, some more beautification, bike racks and benches and parks and green space and coffee shops and pubs and restaurants, you know, small scale and all within the, the sort of, the scheme and the bucolic feel that we already have downtown. I'll, we are thrilled to present to you guys, hopefully at the next meeting or, you know, after the new board constitutes, so I won't go further than that, except to say that we found a really interesting grant opportunity that one of our board members found for us. It's a grant through the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. And last year, thirty-one municipalities applied, thirty-one received funds, somewhere between the, between five thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The purpose of the grant, it was applied in Ashland, actually, last year, was awarded over twenty-seven thousand dollars just for rezoning downtown. It's, it, you know, things like focusing on sustainability efforts in, in the rezoning and/or housing efforts, green space, things like that will help make our application stronger. We, we found this out earlier, the end of last week, when we met on Friday is the first time we found out about this. The application is due on May twenty-fourth. So I, I was corresponding with, with Mark yesterday and what we've done, because our committee members don't have the bandwidth to take on this project in the next couple of weeks, which is going to take a fair amount of work, we think twenty to thirty hours worth of work potentially to put together this application. So we have asked Claire Reynolds, who is our former interim coordinator and longtime member, to put this together for us at her contract rate. We have money in our budget under our employment section to do that. So that is our plan to, to put this in, but we think it'll be a great return on investment. We've asked Claire to keep her costs under two thousand dollars and we're almost certain to get that back and then some.
Okay. Mr. Purple, is, is that correct, that there are the funds available?
Yes, because of the, the gap between the previous person and then the interim and then, and then now that we have Mareka, there's approximately three thousand dollars, assuming that everything goes according to plan from here until June thirty.
All right. I don't have a problem with moving forward with this, with the grant.
Sounds great.
Okay. Do we have a motion to?
Need a motion for that?
You can, if you want to take an official vote to authorize that to happen, we can. I'm going to be executed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, Mr. Purple, do you have anything under Town Administrator's Report?
I do not.
I am also going to use my Town Administrator's, I'm sorry, Chairman's Report, sorry. Mrs. Faniff, we can never thank you enough for everything you've done for this town. And the history that you bring is the one thing I will personally miss on this board the most. How many discussions we've had that we've turned to you and said, well, how was it done ten years ago or twelve years ago? I mean, that's, or maybe even longer ago. That's-
You got into trouble.
That's something that this board will be lacking going forward. I can't thank you enough for taking me under your wing and mentoring me through my, you know, couple of years that I've been on the board. You will be very, very missed. That being said, and I know the board has, would also like to speak, but Representative Dykem is here and I'd like to turn the mic over to her. And I know you hate this and I'm really sorry, but it's deserving, so.
I know, I'm, I'm watching, I'm watching Ms. Faniff's face and I'm glad to be able to recognize you today. And when I heard that this was going to be your last meeting, I certainly couldn't pass up the opportunity to recognize your tremendous service to Southborough and also to thank your family for recognizing what you're able to do here tonight. And I know it's many hours away from family, but the impact on this community of your service and of your dedication will last for a very long time. And in fact, the years that you've put in, as was mentioned, I mean, you have incredibly deep roots in this community and the perspective, the history and the priorities and values of the residents of this town are so aptly and have been so aptly presented on this board. I, I personally have come before you every year and I think, in fact, you were on this board when I was first elected to office, so we have seen much of each other. And your advocacy on behalf of seniors in this town, the disabled, public safety at every opportunity is really remarkable. The town is incredibly well-served. I can't pass this opportunity, as we approach Memorial Day, to recognize your efforts over many, many years, I don't even know how many years, in making sure that the Veterans Memorial right in the center of town is consistently beautiful and truly representative of the importance that this community places on its veterans and its veterans' history. And it is appreciated and recognized by everyone who not only attends the ceremonies on both Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but all throughout the year. So for, for so many things, for those things and so many more that I, I know that you do and have done that maybe aren't as visible but are essential to the working of this town and to the quality of life of all the residents who live here, just a heartfelt appreciation. And I want to present to you on behalf of the legislature for all of your work, a citation, and I will read it. It reads, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Bonnie J. Faniff in recognition of your dedicated service on the Southborough Board of Selectmen and your outstanding commitment over many, many years to the Southborough community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for its good fortune and continued success." And it's signed by the Speaker of the House as well as myself as State Representative for Southborough. And I have a corollary recognition on behalf of the Massachusetts Senate, on behalf of Senator Eldridge. So thank you, thank you, Bonnie, for all you do.
If I may, just to address Carol, these things make me very uncomfortable, though I'm not, even though I might sit up here as a public person, I, I don't do it for this reason. I, I'm speechless, I don't know what to say. I, I do think it's important that the community knows that when Peter and I got married some forty-nine years ago, that he was a resident of Southborough and I moved here within months of our marriage. And we sold our first home and built a home on Middle Road. And when we did that, the decision at that time was made that we would never uproot our children. I lived in twenty-six different homes before I moved to Southborough, so I consider South borough my home. I voted on very large projects. At some point I said, well, maybe I'll recover from these and somebody else will use it. As you see, I have these wonderful grandchildren who are now in the schools that I paid for. So enjoy them. All of my children have been in the K eight, grandchildren have been in the K eight school system. My children all have homes in this town and I'm hoping they enjoy it as much as I have and be good neighbors to all of you as well. But this is very uncomfortable for me, but thank you.
We know you hate it, so. I believe, Mrs. Faniff, Mr. Faniff has something for you. My, oh my, what could it be?
A flower?
My anniversary next month.
And we have a little- And we have a little bit of yummy cake to celebrate. I'd like to open it up, Deanna Byrne, if you'd like to add something as well, please feel free to...
Thank you, Dave. I'm sorry.
Oh, Peter, would you like to say something as well?
No.
No, okay. I guess that's that.
All I can say is, you're probably, you're losing a, my sweetest selectman that way. And town, and I am gaining my wife back. Some very prolific words from one of my grandsons who, Bonnie gets off the bus every night and on, he comes over to the house after he gets off the bus and he hangs out with his Nana. And he says, and on the nights when there's selectmen's meetings, he is cut short from time with Nana. So, as they say from the word, you know, the words of wisdom come from the very young. He says, "Nana, no more meetings." Amen.
Well said, thank you.
Very much so.
Thank you.
And they've all, and they just all came from the fields playing baseball.
All right, that being said, is there any further comments anyone would like to make?
You want more comments? She says no.
She says no, okay. We'd also, at this time, before we adjourn as well, we would like to thank Brian Schifrin, Selectman Schifrin, for his dedication during the last year and a half during his term. He's been a scholar and a gentleman. There's very few people in this life that have been able to change my mind on things and Brian was one of them. So, Brian will also be very much missed and we very much appreciate, with everything he's going through, the dedication he still gave to the town of Southborough.
Yeah, if you're looking for a profile in courage, as I said when we last, you kindly hosted, you know, a brunch for Bonnie and Brian a couple of weeks ago, you need to look no further than Mr. Schifrin and his family.
Absolutely.
We have a gentleman at the microphone.
Peter J. Faniff, 6 Maple Street, Fayetteville, Massachusetts. I always like to make sure I make that point. Unfortunately, my father and my mother took most of the wind out of my sails, but I'm very proud of the accomplishments both of my parents have had in this community. They both put a lot of equity, tears, love into this town. And like my father said, it's going to be nice to have my mother not come here every day and not have the phone ring off the hook and not have people complain.
Do you really think that's going to happen?
Only from you people. But, like my father said, you know, my kids would always call my mother the Mayor of Southborough. That was, she wasn't Nana, she was the mayor. And, you know, my brother and sister's children, same way. My stepchildren, every time they drive through the common, they say, "That's Nana's cannon." Because we've rebuilt it so many times in the garage. So, I mean, every, we have a deep root in this town. It's fourth generation, you know, we're coming on the fourth. Matt, I don't know how many Burt and Aussies there are now, but I think you beat us. But, no, Mom, you've done a great job and we all love you.
Thank you.
And I will just add to Bonnie's family, thank you for sharing her with us. I know how hard it can be, how hard it is being away, you know, as kids. I mean, I have a teenager at home, though I'm not always sure that he's glad I'm not there. But, overall, you know, thank you. It's taken a huge chunk of your life. You guys have grown up with this, you know, with Dad serving the town and Mom as well. So, this isn't only for Mom, this is a thank you to you as well for sharing her with us. And you did have her in good hands when she was with us. So, thank you. That being said, we will not, we will not embarrass Mrs. Faniff any further. Mrs. Faniff, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
No, I just wanted to know, am I going to get my taxes waived?
Well, citizen's petition could, oops, that word.
Free dump sticker.
On the inside.
Take the plaque?
You may.
Thank you.
Would you like to make the final motion to adjourn?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Kalenda?
Then I would reluctantly move that we adjourn Mrs. Faniff's last meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.